We're allowed to start. Okay. I call the, to order the planning and zoning city of Glen Rose, Texas on February 2nd, 2023 at 5:30 PM. If we can all stand for clutch.
(inaudible). (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Larry Cremeno?
I'm here, mostly.
William Green is here. Great. Go ahead. I am here, Pam Streeter. And in general, both is absence. We are four zero, which were four one, which does mean we have quorum. All right. We're going to start with our consent agenda regarding the approval of the minutes from December 6th, 2022 and December 27th, 2022, planning and zoning. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those? Is there any revisions that we need to make?
No, not that I see.
All right. If there is no proposed changes, is there a motion for action on the approval of the minutes from the December 6th and December 27th, 2022, planning and zoning meetings?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cremeno. There I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. All of those in favor? One, two, three, four. Nobody to oppose. We pass four zero. Fantastic. All right. I am now going to open the public hearing at 5:33. I'd like to take the opportunity to remind everybody that this portion of the meeting is strictly for public comments only, no Q and A. Anyone wishing to speak during this time is asked to give their name and address, and will have three minutes to make statements or comments after each item has been announced. You will have the opportunity to pose questions during the discussion and consideration portion of the meeting. All right. We are here for a public hearing regarding the request to rezone lot 00001, block 00001, tract 1, abstract A, 135-PS, Paloxi Summit, block 1, lot 1, acres 1.502, 103, Paloxi Summit Boulevard, from an R2M single and 2 to 4 family residential district cabin and condominium configurations allowable to an R4 multifamily residential district. Do we have any public comments at this time?
They are the current owners.
The current owners.
And we've got Andrew Hansen that is via Zoom.
Okay.
Now, where the owners of the property can we speak for the deal?
I would prefer that you wait and we speak during the discussion and consideration since you are actively involved in the deal. All right. So nobody's here for that? All right. Our next is pub, excuse me. Public hearing regarding the request to reason block 00001, tract 2, abstract A, 135 PS, Paloxi Summit Blocks 1, Lot 2, Acres 1.501, 105, Paloxi Summit Boulevard, from R2M single and double to four and four family residential district cabin and condominium configuration allowable to an R4 multifamily residential district. And nobody is currently available for that one. So our third one will be a public hearing regarding the request to reasons lots 00003, block 00001, tract 3, abstract A, 31 PS, Paloxi Summit District Block 1, Lot 3, Acres 1.5, 107, Paloxi Summit Boulevard, from an R2M single and 2 to 4 family residential district cabin and condominium configurations allowable to an R4 multifamily residential district. And again, there's nobody present for that as a public comment, so I am now going to close the public hearings at 5:35 PM. All right. With that said, we are now, we're going to start our individual items configure for consideration. includes what I just said.[340.03][340.03](laughter) Lots 1, Block 1, Tract 1, Abstract A, 31 PS Properties, Block 1, Lot 1, 103, from an R2M to an R4. For this particular property, four property owners were sent out representing six properties.
Yes.
One had been confirmed as received, three has been left unconfirmed, so, and none have been returned.
Correct.
Okay. Just for all of our sakes, this is the land that is at the top of the hill behind the Holiday Inn, which has gone through a number of zoning and rezoning and zoning again. All right. This would be the time we can come up and speak.
Okay. Good. My name's Scott Steenson. Our address is 3058 County Road 2013, Glen Rose, 76043. Regarding the zoning, the recent zoning change, we requested a zoning change from B2 to R2M. At that time, we were anticipating building some quadruplexes, and between the time we got that and the time where we are now, the cost of doing that became economically prohibitive. And so we sought out a known developer to build apartments, multifamily project, and that was Andy Hansen in Stevensville. We fully vetted him and his companies and found them to be of high reputation and solvent. Additionally, we reviewed all of the projects that Mr. Hansen has been involved in in the Stevensville area, which are some six or seven projects, and we found them all to be well-designed, well-constructed, and more importantly, well-managed by his companies. So he's not a, he's not a guy that's going to come in and build an apartment project and sell it. Also, he is going to build a market rate product, which is defined as a product that appeals to the market in terms of economics, what people can pay. He uses conventional financing. He has no governmental financing whatsoever, no HUD, no Texas governmental financing will be involved. It will be strictly market rate, conventional financing, and cash. I think his products will be, product will be an asset to Glen Rose and will provide much-needed, and I hate to use the word affordable, but much-needed housing that the multiple people here can afford.
So for my own edification, the whole lot was originally a B2. We then moved everything to R2M.
Correct.
And then we have another plot that you came back already that is along the 144 that we moved back to R2.
Yeah, I think the
The B2.
The reason we went to R2M is because the property to the immediate south and west of us already been on R2M.
Correct.
And was consistent with what we wanted to do with the property at that time.
Am I, am I mistaken that we'd already looked at this again?
Yeah, I think you are.
The, the his, this was
Yeah. This is Andrew.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're the buyers on the property, and this is just purely those three tracks land, this is, the contract is contingent on the property's getting rezoned. So that's all purpose of this. We haven't gone into the plating process. We'll go through all those areas with
It's not showing me. I don't, he might not have it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay.
Same area, different plat, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, because there were originally five, if I recall, that we went from.
Right. Because it was, it's this, this area that went through.
Yeah.
Can you, are you able to pull up the zoning map? And it's right over here. Because the only concern that I am seeing is that this would be considered spot zoning, and we cannot go to R4.
Oh, let's see, where is that?
Yes, sir.
May I respectfully disagree?
You may.
I think spot zoning is where you go into a situation where everything is on commercial, and you decide that you want to put a house in a place where a retail establishment would normally be. That's what I call spot zoning. Spot zoning is totally different from anything in the surrounding area.
I, I understand.
That's my interpretation.
I understand what you're saying, and I, and I'm sure that we've, there is a thousand different interpretations for everything. It would be one that I would caution us to want to have to check with our city attorney to ensure that we're not opening that.
May I speak?
Yes.
So, you know, we did talk to him about a similar situation in Wolf City where we were rezoning something, and he said that whenever there's similar uses, then you don't have to worry about the spot zoning.
So then that would concur with your opinion, and we can move on from that point.
Just a disclaimer, I'm not an attorney. I'm just repeating what I've heard.
You are correct. He did say that. I could concur that he has said that in the past. All right.
I've got it pulled up here, but I don't know.
I'm going to ask you if we've concluded that the spot zoning is not going to become a relevant issue. My next question is going to be, let's look at the schedule of uses and the difference between R2M and R4.
Okay.
I apologize that I don't have that with me right now.
R4 gives you the highest density per acre yard. The city of Glen Rose doesn't have that density factor per acre, but they have a, what's the word, impervious, impervial coverage, so essentially a landscaping, you have to have X amount percentage of landscaping per acre.
Do you want to know the definition or the schedule of uses for R4?
Well, I believe that what he's discussing, Mr. Hanson's discussing, is it's about the actual definition and the densities and setbacks in landscaping and not necessarily the actual schedule of use.
That's right. It's impervious coverage, pardon my
Right.
Page 21 is going to be the definition.
Thank you.
R4.
20 is our, is our Except this definition does not actually provide the details. yard height, lot coverage, and building size references 14.02.041.
Okay, so that is the zoning district, districts generally, which has the minimum lot sizes.
Can you share with me the minimum lot sizes on R2M versus R4, please?
R2M, it has the node of A, which is a minimum lot area for the R2, R2M districts is 6,600 square feet for a single-family unit, 7,500 square feet for a two-family unit. R2M district allows additional units and requires 3,000 square feet for each unit in excess of two. Minimum lot width is 60, lot depth is 110, front yard setback is 25. If they're on a major street, it's 35. Side yard setback is 7. Corner lot is 25, rear yard is 25. Maximum height story is 2.5 stories. Height of structure is 35. Maximum lot coverage is 40%. Minimum living area excluding garage is 5,000, or sorry, 550. R4 has a note of B, which is the minimum lot area for R3 district is 6,600 square feet for a single-family, 7,500 square feet for two-family, and 1,500 square feet for each additional unit in excess of two. Those don't apply since it goes to mobile homes lots. Minimum width is 50, lot depth is 120, front yard setback is 25, main street is 35, yard, side yard setback is 7, corner lot setbacks 25, 25 for rear setback, maximum height is three stories, height of structure is 45, maximum lot coverage is 40, minimum living area exceeding garage is 550.
All right. So the main differences on those items is the difference between 3,000 square feet on the minimum lot size versus 1,000, and story height is 2.5 versus 3, and lot depth is 120 versus 110. Those are the, everything else is equal. We all kind of agree?
Hmm.
Okay. Schedule use in an R4 allows the mobile homes. Don't allow that in the R2. For just everybody's sake, we don't get to make a decision on what your plans are or what Mr. Hanson's plans are. You guys can tell us anything, and all we get to decide is whether or not is this the private, is the land use as an R4 best used in our community for what can be allowed in an R4? So whether or not he says he's going to do one thing once it's on R4, he can do anything within an R4 allowance. So we're just making extra research to ensure what happens or what could happen in that land area makes sense for the overall community as a whole.
As it sits for an R4 manufactured home, manufactured home park is not allowed.
As it, on our sheet or on what's on the website?
What's on here.
Because that was the big thing of the city that we had to resolve. We said a man, the mobile home could be there.
Packet doesn't have that.
Sure, you have, our packet, actually, no, because I hit those sections. You have it on your computer. What I sent you, I just, I, I just closed the column, those columns.
I can, I can grab the last packet.
Okay.
We know you're really not here for us.
Yeah, it's a meeting.
Who are we here for?
Sure you guys have. We love having you here, but
while Judge is getting that information to answer my questions, is there any questions that you gentlemen have that can be answered?
Well, I mean, she didn't know anything about the mobile home, mobile homes.
Okay.
She's a big concern.
Yeah, I forgot my first reading.
Do you have any questions outside of that one?
No, not outside of that one.
Okay. I just want to make sure my memory is not failing me by having her to check that.
On y'all's website, it doesn't have it checked. I'm looking at it. Manufactured home, there's no X next to it on, under the code of ordinances.
Yeah, no, I understand. There's, we've been updating all of our schedule of uses, and I'm not positive that every update has been uploaded to the website as of yet because you're doing the website enhancements. So I just want to verify that the active working document that we're fall under is in line with what is on the website.
I'm like, you have no work. Something like that. Okay, thank you.
I don't exactly where it's sitting.
That's probably the one we don't even No, that would be the one that I'm currently looking online.
Um, it was the whole thing when we went through with the Clifton, with the Simpsons. I apologize, everyone.
So that I may follow along or long, are you looking at the appendix A, schedule of uses?
Uh, we are looking for our most updated copy of that, yes.
But, okay. On the website, it doesn't have mobile home marked.
I, I understand that, sir, but as I've just said, we've been working off of, working on updating the website, and we want to make sure that the document that the city has, city council has voted on is the document that we're looking at for the final version so that we can provide adequate information and not rely on what might be an outdated website. And the only reason that I am fairly certain that this is in question is we've had a recent case that we denied a move to an R4 because of the mobile homes and went back with that person, with that home, landowner, and found a solution for them, which is what my memory is. You have to straighten your eyes. It's okay.
I think that last page is the residential.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to remember why it was a problem with the Simmons. back and forth on that a Okay. All right. Mobile homes are not allowed in an R4. All right.
Or not.
Or not. Or not. No, it was...
R3.
R3 allows it.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Krimina, do you have any thoughts, other questions?
No, I don't have any. My only question was about the...
Okay. Does anybody have a pleasure of how to take this suggestion?
I think it's fine, rezone it R4.
Is that a motion?
It sounded like a statement to me.
You want me to make a motion?
Well, what's everybody's hesitation? I mean, there seems to be a hesitation, so what's our thought process? I don't want to just jump forward and assume everybody's great. It turns out there's something wrong. Nobody's jumping at it, so why?
Ain't no need to.
Mr. Hanson, I know we can't make the decision related to this, but what is your intent for the property?
Our intent's to build apartments, but that's about as far as we've gone.
Okay.
Until we purchase the property, we haven't spent time or money on architects, engineering, stormwater drainage, all the normal pre-con stuff. This is purely to close on the property.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Well, I need a motion said.
I know. I'm on the same page here. I know what he's going to say.
You want to tell me the motion?
I'll make the motion that we rezone this from R2M to R4. This is, can I make it on all three tracks, one time, or you got to do each one individual?
Technically, we have to do each one individually.
Okay.
But I won't make a statement every time.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
Four, Track 1, 103 Pallexi Summit Boulevard. What is, do we have, we have a motion and a second? All in favor. That will be 4-0. Four, Track 2, that will be 105 Pallexi Summit Boulevard. Do I have the motion to rezone from R2M to R4?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor. That will go 4-0. Four, Track 3, 107 Pallexi, we have the motion to make the rezone from R2M to R4.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor.
3-0.
Mr. Hanson, it looks like everything falls into your favor for you guys to move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Will we still, will this go to City Council on Tuesday?
Yes, this will.
Okay.
Yes.
Just confirming.
We have a few City Council members sitting in here, so they're aware of the discussions we've already had. We will make sure they're aware of all the research that we have conducted to ensure that they have the information, so it's not final until they say yes or no.
That meeting is on the 13th of February.
It's Monday, because Tuesday is Valentine's Day, the council meeting's on Monday.
Oh, that's right. Monday, the 13th.
Yes. The first hurdle is passed. You have another hurdle to go.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the appointment of a planning and zoning commission chair. So last month, we all got reseeded. Now you guys have to decide who's leading you. I will stay in this position if that's your pleasure, but if anybody else wants to step up, I am happy to...
Happy that you stayed.
Take that.
Yeah, so, I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. All right.
I'll second that.
So motion to nominate... Is there a motion to nominate anybody else for chair? We have a second on this motion?
You gave the second, didn't you, Greg?
I did.
Larry made the motion, didn't he?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, we'll do that way. All right, all in favor, I choose to abstain.
If you wanted to pitch it, you could have put it on Joe.
I'm not going to do that.
What happens when you don't show her?
I'm not going to do that. So it is a 3-0-1. I choose to abstain from my own vote, for the sake of preservation of politics. All right. Okay. We now need to have a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the appointment of a vice chair. That is currently Joe.
I make a motion, we continue Joe as vice chair.
Second.
That will be a 4-0. Okay. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding recommendations to add cigar-bar smoking room to the City of Glen Rose zoning ordinance definitions, and then would also have to go into a schedule of use. I put forward... Oh, we did have a, in favor.
Yeah, on one of them we did.
Okay. All right. So this has come up, obviously, because there has been questions of possible development. In conversation with Jody, we tried to figure out really, what's kind of, what do they, what does somebody want to do? Can they do it? Is it something, and I came back with the whole, well, Big Cup's bar area is smoking, and Sex and Nil has a humidor, and I believe they allow cigar smoking on their, in their outgrounds, everything. But this would be a closed building that is more a cell and allow people to come in and smoke cigars, which is kind of different than just calling it a smoking area. So Jody and I decided we probably ought to put it into the definitions and make sure that it was specifically called out with some parameters of perhaps filtration systems, et cetera, to ensure that we're not overwhelming people with smoke, but if they walk in, it should be at their own risk. But, you know, the whole health, safety concepts. So I did some research, and I threw out a couple of definitions that are on page 50. A cigar bar means any roll tobacco weighing three or more pounds per 1,000, which roll has wrapper and cover consisting only of tobacco. A bar means establishment or area within an establishment, blah, blah, blah. Cigar bar means a bar or an area within a bar designated specifically for the smoking of tobacco products purchased on premise or elsewhere, except that a cigar bar that is in an area within a bar shall be an area enclosed by solid walls or windows or ceiling, a solid door, and equipped ventilation system which is separately exhausted from the non-smoking areas of a bar, so that the air from the smoking areas is not recirculated back into the non-smoking areas, and smoke is not back-streamed into the non-smoking areas. That's two different definitions, a very vague one, a much more specific-y one. Or the third one that I found is an establishment in the existence of the date of the adoption of blah, 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 serves alcohol for consumption by patrons on premise, either itself or in conjunction with an affiliated entity operating within said premises derives 30% or more of its gross revenue from the sale of tobacco products, related paraphernalia, and shall permit the smoking of cigars and other tobacco products by patrons on the premise, and prohibits the entry of persons under the age of 21 at all times. For the purposes of this section, affiliated entities shall be defined as a commercial entity which with the cigar bar has a business relationship, including but not limited to a lease or sublease contract, servicing agreement, or sharing of expenses and profits. Those are just three different things I found. Nowhere am I saying that any one of those should be taken at value. I think it was a discussion point for us to kind of form our importance. I do believe that if we're going to do this, there are a couple of things in here that I agreed with, and one is that we're going to state if it's a cigar bar, is, and alcohol is being served. We need to kind of state that that's an assumption. Whether a percentage of sales from cigar or alcohol matters, I don't think it does. I don't care. But I do think we need to state that alcohol is permitted to be sold at a cigar bar, just because that's what most people want to go do, drink a brandy, smoke a cigar, have a nice Scotch. So I don't want to say that they can only sell tobacco and not have alcohol. Does everybody kind of agree with me on that one?
That's fair.
All right. I do think that regardless of whether it is all one thing, and that you can smoke everywhere within the premise, or if they're going to separate into a smoking or a non-smoking, ventilation system should be important. And I liked what that was said up in that upper definition, because we don't want them putting all the poison out into the air either. They need to kind of filter their exhaust, and if they are going to have a non-smoking area, they should make sure that the smoking area doesn't impede the non-smoking area.
Who goes into a cigar bar and sits in a non-smoking?
Husband and wife.
That's a perfect...
Wife goes and smokes a cigar, the husband has a problem with it. I'm just saying, I think the ventilation system concept was important. I'm with you.
I like that.
I'm with you.
I like ventilating, but I don't know about the two sections.
I don't, to me, that's a, if they choose to do it, that's on them to make sure it's ventilated.
Got it.
But even if the entire building is all smoking, I think they should have good ventilation.
Yes. Yes.
Just so that it's more pleasurable for everybody smoking. What do we feel about the age 21 thing that I found?
Is that the age now?
Yeah, it is. Tobacco products is 21, alcohol is 21. It would kind of suck to be a kid stuck in watching your dad smoke or your mom smoke and not be able to breathe.
But you can still go to war.
Yeah, that's different. There's exceptions to the age of 21. Four people in...
Very.
I don't know how I know that, but they're all... Does anybody feel that there has to be an age limit?
I think there should.
There should. You think so?
Yeah, it should be like 21.
21.
Legal age to buy, and, you know, or accompanied by a guardian.
Or accompanied by a guardian. I like that. So we're not saying you can't bring your kid.
Yeah, it's the same rule as like an alcohol bar. You can take your kid in there.
I mean, do we want to say that they can only be using cigars in a cigar bar, a three or more, I mean, three or more pounds per 1,000, or...
I don't even understand that definition.
I don't either. I just copied it. I...
There's something missing with it.
I'm sure there was.
1,000 what?
I'm sure there was. I didn't say, I actually went to the best sources for my information. I just Googled. Obviously, allowing them to purchase and consume on-site, that one definition, so they can bring it from the outside, I think that is something we leave up to the owners. If they're going to allow somebody to bring something in and smoke from outside, that's on them.
Yeah.
So I don't necessarily want to get into saying that stuff, but I do think we need to be able to say purchase and consume. Anything else that you want to, any other parameters, does food, I mean, if alcohol's allowed, they have to follow alcohol laws about food service, et cetera?
I have just one question. Sometimes alcohol bar, I mean, cigar bars allow you to have like a locker where they don't sell alcohol, but you have a locker where you can have like a, like a community bourbon or whatever. Would that be precluded from any of this language?
To me, it's, we're going to say consumption of alcohol is allowed, and be very vague. They then, whoever it is, would then have to follow whatever alcohol laws. So if they're allowing a locker and storage of said alcohol that somebody brings in personally, that's them. They can decide to do that. They can give away alcohol and have nothing, not charge for it and have no thing. All we're saying is that the consumption of alcohol can occur on-site, and let the developer-owner make the decision of how he wants to, or not, serve alcohol. We're just giving the right to do it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Don't want to be, don't want to be too restrictive.
That would be a good discretion of the owner, then?
Yeah. If they choose to allow alcohol on their premise, that's their discretion. If they're allowing alcohol, whether it's they're giving it away, selling it, or allowing somebody to bring it in and store it, that's their discretion. I don't want to get into that.
I think that's fair.
Anything else about cigar bar that we want to see in a definition?
Is, if they have alcohol involved in this, just a question, are there any state guidelines or rules on this about distances or anything?
They would have, if they are, if they're selling alcohol, they would have to follow all the guidelines.
All the alcohol guidelines.
If they are giving it away, then it's a different law altogether, or non-law. There's no distances required if you're just handing it out to somebody.
I don't know if you call it a... I don't know if you'd call it a cigar bar, if that changed the whole dynamics of it.
So I looked and I didn't see anything related to that. So I actually first looked up the state of Texas laws about cigar bars. That's that vague thing at the very top. And then I looked up other cities and got those two where I thought were the most comprehensive. And so I said, we can kind of refine from there. Whatever we finally end up with, it's going to go through the city attorney to make sure we're in compliance anyway, so. All right. So that's the generalality. We're talking about ventilation, that you need to be of legal age to walk in or be accompanied by a guardian. You can purchase and consume tobacco on site, which is kind of the key one that needs to be said. And at the discretion of the developer-owner, whatever, alcohol would be allowed. What zones would we want this to be in? So B2, general district, business district along 67, kind of makes the, obviously that makes sense. B1, restricted. Do you guys have thoughts? What about a B3? What about on the historic district?
I think it's fine, putting on squares.
That would definitely need more ventilation to make sure it doesn't transfer between attached buildings and everything. Yeah.
But it may be cost prohibitive to do that at that point, but that's on them.
Okay. What do you guys think on that? Is that fine? Okay. Any industrial zone? Any name?
I don't see anybody putting one in.
I agree. I agree. As we know the town today, you're right, in other cities, things like this have popped up in industrial warehousing areas because that's where the cheaper rent is. So I don't have a problem saying yes to an industrial zone on this for the future, even though it wouldn't necessarily happen today. But I don't see it going into any residential or anything of that nature. So are we good with this, kind of?
I am.
In my vaguing enough that we'll all kind of draft something?
Yeah.
These salacious points? And we go forward? All right. Do I have a motion to approve a vaguely worded definition of a cigar bar based on the bullet points of alcohol is allowed at the discretion of ownership, ventilation systems have to ensure that the smoking area is exhausted completely separate from non-smoking areas, and it cannot disturb neighbors if it's in a?
Require over-stuffed leather furniture?
I wasn't going to do that.
Smoking jackets.
You have to wait, you know, to have a, you need to get all this together and have a public hearing and all before we can.
I'll have the whole thing drafted and we'll put it up on our next thing. This was just our discussion to kind of make sure that we're on the right track for this. Okay. So grab a motion for me to pursue a final definition and schedule a use change for this.
I have a motion.
All right. Motion second?
I'll say.
All in favor for me to move forward? Four zero. All right. Yet again, this comes back to us because we're stuck. We want to do the right thing, but we don't know what the right thing is. And so city council has reviewed it. They have come back and did not move forward with our previous suggestions for the select commercial properties, parking suggestions. So I've taken a different approach. First thing I've done is, and kind of was in discussion with Councilman Conrad, that she's having a hard time visualizing what size parking is needed for what size buildings, for what sky square footage is, et cetera. So I decided to kind of step back for all of us and do a little educating. So I looked through a number of our, I went through the CAD and I came up with a bunch of stuff. So based on deeds is how I came up with all of this. So if we take Brookshires, they sit on 2.4 acres. Their building square footage, according to the CAD, is 28,000 square feet, which means that their building is sitting on 27% of their acreage. Okay? Our current parking at the 1 per 200, which is what grocery stores in our, as of today, are sitting at, means that they would have to have 140 parking spaces. Under a new parking, where we kind of lie in that 1 per 350, it would mean they needed to be at 80 spaces. So 24% of their 2.4 acres would be under parking, under the old ordinance or under the current ordinance of parking requirements. And under a newer thought process, it would be 14%. So if you look at this and say 27% of the land is building and then another 24% is parking right now, half of the acreage they own is under parking. That's just throwing some numbers out there. I then looked at the Big Ben Dollar General. They sit on 1.36 acres, according to the CAD. And according to the CAD, their building square footage or that gross floor area is 12,956 square feet. They would fall under the one, they're falling under the 1 to 200, which means they would have had to have 65 acres or 65 parking spaces. I can guarantee you, there is not 65 parking spaces there. So they're under a variance, but nowhere could I find where that variance was issued and what they actually ended up with. At the 1 per 350, they would land at 37 spaces, which feels right, but they don't even have 37 spaces right now.
37 is still plenty.
So I went down to Red Barn. Everybody's familiar with Red Barn, right? They sit on .366 acres and that building is 3702. One per, they would fall under my new idea, and this is where I'm going to come back around to, because I have a new idea on how we can adjust and look at parking. It's based off of lot sizing. So when you look at some of that commercial stuff, I've kind of looked at some of these properties and said, okay, we're concerned about how much parking we're forcing somebody based on their needs. So what if we actually divided it up differently? And instead of saying, okay, well, if you're a grocery store, you have to have this, what if we looked at it and said, if your square footage is this or under, then this is your parking requirement. But if you're between this and this number, you have this parking requirement. And if you're up over this number, you go to this other parking requirement. So I did some math on that. And that's, if Red Barn at 3702, and what I had basically proposed is if you were 0 to 500 and 5,500 square feet, you would follow the 1 per 200 GFA that we have today. And the reason for that is your square footage of your building space is so small that any higher number, 300, 350, you're not getting parking spaces. You're going to have one. We don't want that. We want a building to have parking. So I kind of said, okay. Right, they want customers, they need parking. So I kind of said, okay, well, if you're at 550 square feet and we said it is 1 per 200, you end up with, let me do this better. You end up with like 27 spaces. I don't know if that's the right number or not. I was just throwing something out there for us. If you were 5,501 square feet to 12,500 square feet, we would move you to a 300, 1 per 300. That would take you to 41 spaces. Again, I feel like that's a really big number for a fairly small store. Then if you're over 12,500, we would take you to 1 per 350 parking spaces. So in the interest of Red Barn, I'm sorry, not Red Barn, was Blue Butterfly is what I was looking at. So Red Barn would stay, if they're 3,700 square feet, they would stay at 19 spaces. Under the current ordinance, they'd be required to have 19. Under the new ordinance, they would be required to have 19. Blue Butterfly, everybody's familiar with Blue Butterfly, correct? Okay. So Blue Butterfly is 9,050 square feet on a half acre. Under the current ordinance, at 1 per 200, they'd have to have 45 spaces. Under this proposed idea that is just that, an idea, they would be able to go down to 30 spaces. If we looked at Lee Medical Healthcare, they're 6,300 square feet on .39 acres. They would be able to go from 32 to 21. Glenrose Discount Drug, we all know they don't have any parking. I mean, they're what, five spaces plus the dirt in front? They're 5,000 square feet on .179 acres. So they are quote-quote supposed to have 26 spaces. And they don't. Again, there's variances. And I'm not saying any of these would have to change. I was just using these as spatial's. So everybody kind of knows and is familiar with these buildings. You kind of get the idea of what, you know what their lot sizes are, you know what their building sizes are, you're familiar with them. This just gives us a more visual look at how much parking do we really need?
I don't think any of these on here have a required amount other than maybe Brookshires.
I agree with you, but that's, that's actually one of my points, is that we have this 1 per 200, but all of our existing stuff aren't. So let's be realistic about what we need new people to do. So that was my thought to bring up to you guys, just to kind of give you guys some showing. So some facts. One acre of land equals 43,560 square feet. One standard parking space is 180. It is 8.5 by 18 feet is the typical standard parking space. Most developers will look for a lot to be between 300 to 300 square feet per parking stall, and that includes all the drives, the driving zones around it, so that people can back up the aisleways between the parking spaces. So when they're looking at their square footage and trying to determine how many parking spaces they can fit, they're using that 3 to 350 square footage number to look at how much parking they can really fit into the space that they have. So I just wanted to give some info. So with that, your pages 54 through 61 is every single line item on our current schedule of uses with parking. So a couple of the big things that I looked at and changed, a lot of this actually does follow what we already have. Some of it, I cleaned up wording. For example, on ambulance dispatch station, it had a C note 14.02 something or other. What that actually is, is it's 1 per 2, every, one space for every two employees, or one space for every 1,000 GFA, whichever is greater, which was actually a 1994 ordinance 14.e. So I'm just taking the ordinance that existed, plopping it right back in. No reason for a change. I just fixed the wording so it referenced the right ordinance and what ordinance we're Funeral homes and mortuaries, I did feel that the 1 per 200 made sense. That's what most cities have it as. And part of that is because you, well, they may not use them on their daily basis, you need them when there is a funeral. When there's a need. So it's not that they need it every day, but they need it when they need it and you don't want them to have to not have them. Gas lines and all of that, I put, you know, NAs where parking isn't even an issue. Racing, automotive, et cetera. I have it at 1 per 3 seats, which is the same thing we have in theaters, which is the same thing for the amphitheaters, et cetera. Schools, I looked at what kind of the state requirements were. So elementary, you're typically looking at 1 per 15 students to the design capacity, not to the enrollment, but what the building is designed is capable of holding. And that was a key thing I saw, is that we needed to add design capacity. So school, elementary, and middle was 1 per 15. High schools are 1 per 3. Nursery schools and kindergartens were 1 per 8. And trade schools were 1 per 2 for students and 1 per staff. So I kind of just picked that up off of what was common. And that made sense to me a little bit of everywhere. So the fairgrounds and the rodeos, I kept that 1 per 3. That, beaters, it all seemed kind of the same, 1 per 3 seats. We have some things like farm implement sales, livestock auctions, I moved those to 1 per 300 GFA. It's just not going to have the same kind of density of need for parking in those types of businesses. The truck garden, orchard, farm, ranch, it's 2 per dwelling unit or 1 per employee, just kind of a.
Was interested in that one. Know what that means.
I kind of left that kind of an either/or, I thought we can talk about that, what's really needed. A lot of these where it's more employee-related and isn't necessarily like the vineyard, we don't have a vineyard in the town limits, but who knows what's going to happen in the future. So 1 per employee. I left all the distribution centers and manufacturers and the things that we don't, kind of said we didn't really want here as the 1 per 200. Under all the restaurants and retail sales on premise off premise, I kind of that back. So this is where I come back to, that as you look through this farmer's market or a produce stall, it's 1 for every 3 stalls. Other things that I thought you needed to, flea markets, I had 1 per 2 stalls. A gun shooting range, I have 1 per bay. Massage therapy or spa-like things, I have 1 per bed plus 1 per employee, so that you've got your employee and your customer would have a spot. The personal, the spa, tanning, massage therapy, it was 1 per station. You know what? I missed that. That should probably also have the plus 1. That should probably also have the plus one per play, plus one per employee. If you guys agree when we get around all that. I'm just trying to pull out things that I want you guys to to really look at.
Yeah, I think you've done a good job. It's, I think, smaller number is better because it gives a minimum. And it's a really hard thing to do because you think about broochers and say, Blue Butterfly, it's really different.
They are.
The shopping pattern is really different in those because people go in and actually shop, whereas they pop into Red Barn or Glen Rose Discount Drug, there's a drive-through, and they may just be there for a couple minutes.
Which is kind of why I wanted to.
It's really hard to say everyone gets this. I like it shrinking, it's a minimum of this, then you figure out what you need.
So I think the question that we have to talk about is, what is those ranges of square footages? I mean, I randomly pulled some numbers out. And then, do I have the right set of numbers to those? I went back and I looked at what the Family Dollar store, it would fall into that one per three fifty. When I look at the new Dollar General, it would have fallen in that one per three fifty. So I kind of felt like we've all, we all kind of agreed that less is better for some of those stores. When I look at, you know, when I say it's five thousand five hundred per two hundred, can you do the math again, make sure my numbers are right on how many parking spaces they get? So somebody else is doing it, not just me.
Five thousand two hundred square feet.
Five thousand five hundred square feet divided by two hundred gives me your number of parking spaces.
Seven and a half.
So that number seems a lot to me. For something that's only five thousand square feet, which is why I kind of wanted to show a Red Barn or a Lee Medical, the Glen Rose Discount Drug, is how many do they really need?
Yeah, that's why I think you should put the low, you know, propose the lower numbers, the less stringent guidelines, and then they need to go higher than that, no one.
So do we actually do this in reverse? I went two hundred, two, or two hundred, three hundred, three fifty. Do we actually reverse it and say the lower store, the smaller the store by square footage, needs less parking? So if you look at five hundred and the five thousand five hundred and divide it by three hundred, what's the parking space?
Eighteen.
Does that seem?
Shrink to ten.
One thing that would be helpful before this goes to council would be to go to these stores that you have and actually count how many parking.
I planned to, I just, it iced.
It sure did.
It iced.
It was on the schedule, but it got moved.
It did. So if we were to say that anything from zero to, what is it, six thousand, seven thousand square feet should be one per three hundred? Do you like the fifty-five hundred number that I came up with? What do you, what do you guys think? I just wanted to give us a starting point to talk.
I mean, the smaller stores need less parking, I would think. You can only jam so many people in there if you're giving stuff away.
Right. Fifty-five hundred divided by three fifty.
Fifteen, fifteen sixteen, fifteen point seven.
I mean, I don't know if they'll go for that amount. To me, that's more realistic. If you have a store, I mean, we got big stores that don't have that much, or bigger stores.
Okay, so if we did zero to, does fifty-five hundred square feet sound like a number, a good breakpoint between if you're between this size and this size? I mean, looking at, you've got Glen Rose Discount Drugs, which actually, I mean, that's a pretty decently sized store.
I don't know how much square feet's in that, in that store, but.
Well, according to the CAD, their building is being taxed on being five thousand one hundred and sixty square feet.
And they need twenty-six spaces.
Which is just completely insane to me.
Don't they have that parking lot next to them though, with the big little, little Prius?
They have parking over there, but that's not actually part of their lot. They really only have spaces right up on the side of their building.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they have like, if they have ten spaces, I would be shocked.
I thought for some reason that I was just thinking that he bought that remote parking.
He may have. I'll have to look. I'll look again. I'll look again.
Reason I think that he done it is because there was no parking. I mean, people were.
I know that he's got some spaces right on the side of his building.
Yeah, well, and they weren't really, I mean, with that street running back through there towards the hospital, I guess it still goes all the way through. There wasn't really any parking there.
All right, but if we take Lee Medical Healthcare, that's sixty-three hundred. I mean, that's, that's that strip center, you know, granted, they've got, there's two.
Other buildings?
Well, there's two businesses, and I think their particular plot is the sixty-three hundred.
Red Barn too, three, thirty-seven hundred square feet, that store's not thirty-seven hundred square feet inside of the retail space.
Well, the, the building.
Yeah.
In that case, it's the building.
It is.
The, the store inside, but just if you look at the, the first floor footprint, and his private area is actually on the CAD separately.
Right, I'm just saying it's like, yeah, that's.
Yeah, so I don't know, is it zero to six thousand square feet makes a good breakpoint, zero to seven thousand square feet? I, I kind of, like I said, I pull, I was pulling numbers just to start us somewhere.
I'd, I'd like to, to table this, take a look at it, and then come back.
Okay.
So like I said, it's really tough.
How many breaks do you think you need in it? I know you've got.
I, I really felt like three was the right, and just because when I started, and I really did, I mean, I went building by building down sixty-seven, trying to figure out, okay, what's there? How many spaces does it have? Is it recognizable enough that we can all sit here and say, yeah, I actually know that, what it is and what's in it and how big it is? I tried to avoid all the gas stations.
And I still think it was a good idea. It's like Red Barn, how much of that is storage or?
Right.
Word space, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
Versus actually usable space that people come into and go to these boxes or his counter or whatever. The, the space, the usable space is what I'm getting at, is the usable space for people to come into that actually use that space versus the total square foot of the building. I still think that was a good idea now. They may not, it may not.
Well, here, so I'm going to, I'm going to use your place as an example. Okay, so in your building, your usable space would be considered front of the counter. Right? Okay, you sell. Because you retire, and you get the heck out of Dodge. And somebody comes in and behind you now and moves the counter back halfway through the store. Now their usable space is two to three times what it used to be, but they're following under the parking requirement from when you had it. So I don't like the idea of the usable space because it's changeable.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that, but some spaces not in some businesses. I mean.
You're right.
Totally storage and it's, or if there's a air conditioner or whatever.
But we can't, how do we know?
Well, no, but you could just say if you, if this is what it is, when we're issuing permits on a, a new place or whatever, you can't change what we already have up there. That's.
Right. You're right, and I agree. I just, I felt that, I feel that we can find the answer under the gross floor area without having to sit here and say, oh, that's a utility closet. Okay, well, let's subtract that. Oh, that's going to be, you know, that's going to be a storage room. Okay, well, you can subtract that. Because to get to it, that's a lot of work on staff to sit here and look at, you know, a plat, and we've all looked at the plats. They don't have that information in the plats. So I just feel like the gross floor area is still the right answer because it's universally the same.
I know they're.
We just have to find the right numbers.
And I think that, like you were saying, the smaller businesses up too. I, I don't know if five thousand or six thousand is the number you need to go to if you're going to stretch it out like that. My, my, what I was looking at was between three and three fifty, up to ten or twelve thousand. From there down would be, you know, and then from there.
If we, if we say, let's just say ten thousand and under.
Go ahead, Michael.
There's a couple of numbers that are interesting, the ones you picked. Five thousand is a requirement in building for an engineered slab, and twelve thousand is a requirement for a fire sprinkler system. So there's people that might size buildings based on those two numbers.
Okay.
They're very, they're right on top of what you picked. But, but that would be a way to justify, I mean, say, well, if you get over twelve thousand square feet, you're going to have fire sprinklers, so probably that's going to be a target size.
Right, okay. I got lucky. Thank you for that.
Well, I just started thinking, those numbers seem familiar. I was.
Okay, so zero to five, so five thousand is an engineered slab, so anything under.
Yeah, under five thousand.
So anything under five, so zero to four nine nine nine. We want to give them the least amount of cartilage possible. So
What'd you need?
I don't know what I need. Had that answer. If we looked at three fifty on four nine, that's fourteen, fifteen spaces.
Yeah, that could even be a little higher, really. It depends on the size lot, what they're on.
Well, and now it does, but that actually is the point that DeConrad made. It's not the size lot, they should buy for what they need. So if they know they're going to put a four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot building on a plot of land they're looking at, then we're giving them the information of how much parking they're going to need. They should buy a plot that it will fit. It's not their fault.
But we have a lot of spaces that.
I agree. Her point was, it's not her fault that they didn't buy a big enough plot for their store size. There's value in that statement, whether we agree with it or not. There's value in her statement. Okay, if we went to, from zero to four nine 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 and went with a four hundred, you're looking at thirteen spaces. If they need less than thirteen spaces, it would just be a variance.
Yeah. And then what was the next one? Michael said twelve?
Twelve thousand.
So then here we go, five thousand to eleven nine nine nine.
And I would think that would need to fall between three and three fifty, three fifty, but will they'll buy that or not?
Three fifty, thirty-four spots?
Yeah, see, that's a lot. So I thought we was pretty well on this when we.
We were. We have we have two things going on. One, the person who has been very vocal has near spatial concept. She's admitted it to me. So I've told her that I will solve that in our presentation by giving her things that she will be able to recognize and see what type of space we're talking about. Hence my little chart right here. It's kind of a, you know these stores, you know how they feel, you know how, you know how big their lots are, you know how many parking spaces they have right now. Per Michael, I'll make sure that she knows that. So I think that's been the bigger, her bigger problem. Then the second one is that she feels very strongly about the comprehensive plan, that as a city, we have to have by law, that we really want to engage it and not do what has happened in the past, which is, okay, we did it because we had to by law, let's just shelve it because nobody likes it. She wants it to be a living, breathing document. So she has a concern that we're in, we're making a bunch of rules that may or may not fall in line with what the comprehensive plan asks for.
I've read the draft, and I don't think your parking.
Is off. Yeah, I agree. I've seen enough about what they talked about that I think we're in line with it. Which reminds me, we're supposed to be having a meeting to go through that.
I've been waiting for her to get finished. I mean, I've looked at three drafts and, and she was supposed to do some more work, so, but it should be soon.
Okay.
But it's, but they're not, it's not coming to the city council in, in, in this next meeting because y'all aren't going to have time to look at it.
Right, all right. Well, we were told, I was told that we were going to have it in February. So, and it was supposed to hit your desk, it was supposed to hit your desk on the thirty-first, which it apparently hasn't done, so.
You, you may, you may have a meeting in February, but the council probably isn't going to get to.
Right, yeah.
You know, my last day is eleven days from now, so it'll probably be after.
He is counting now, isn't he?
There's the money.
Okay, so three fifty at eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet, at three fifty puts us at thirty-four spaces. That's a fair number.
It's a lot, yeah, it's big still.
And I really do think that's a very fair number. Okay, so then twelve thousand, now, do we want to do just twelve thousand and up?
That's what I would.
Or do we want to do like a twelve thousand to twenty-four thousand? And the only reason I do this is because parking is one of those things that we can use to kind of control some of the mega box stores. So to keep the Walmarts and the Targets and the Home Depots and things that, while they would all be lovely to have so close by, they would also drive all of our local businesses out of business.
But I think if those businesses are going to come, they're going to buy the land, they need to do what they want, you're right.
I don't disagree, but.
Because they're going to, because they're going to see it as losing money if they don't put enough parking spaces in there.
Exactly. They're going to have more than enough parking.
Like, you know, it's like your mechanic shop, you wouldn't buy a space with two, a lot with two parking spaces. You need more because you have a lot of cars there.
So at the twelve thousand mark.
Walmarts range from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we're never going to get one in our town. We don't have the land for it, but.
So you could go to a hundred thousand or nine, ninety-nine, nine, nine, nine.
Well, you could get a, like a fifty thousand, or I'm looking at, I'm looking at broochers is really that twenty-eight thousand. That, that number, that kind of jumps, bring in an HEB and it's going to be bigger than a twenty, than twenty-eight thousand broochers. So I kind of sit here and say, okay, thirty thousand is kind of the number, you know, if we go twelve thousand to thirty thousand.
I mean, what are you going to go, thirty-two?
Thirty into infinity, and I think at thirty-two infinity, we bring it back down to the one per two hundred because that keeps the mega stores out, or a little, makes them have to buy a lot more land than we actually have. So at thirty thousand, at a three hundred, they would have to have a hundred spaces.
Does that kind of go in line with businesses of that size?
Yeah, well, right now, the broochers at twenty-eight thousand would have to have a hundred and forty spaces at, and I, by the way, I did the math on a hundred and forty spaces and how much percentage of the, of the populace of Glen Rose that actually lets us park there. It would be, it's over one percent. Could be at broochers at the same time, one percent of the town of Glen Rose, one point four. Could be at broochers at the same time parking and shopping. I don't think I've ever seen that. It would be point three percent of the entire county. If we did. If we did.
What would you guess? They got parking spot up there, Michael?
I don't know. Can you pull Google, Google Earth up?
I bet they got a hundred or more.
Oh, I think, no, I guarantee you, they're at the one forty. I guarantee you they're at the one forty. They didn't ask for a variance, they took their one forty.
Well, they were built so long ago, there might not have been those.
That's true. They've been there a while.
They've got five on that side, they took some out on this side when they did their shopping thing. They've got one, two, three, four, double rows, that's of about fifteen each, fifteen, thirty, forty-five, sixty, seventy-five, ninety. They're probably about a hundred.
See, they, they've got a, they've got a plan. They're figuring, there's a payday when people come in, you know, their store gets small on payday. And so they, they have to have a parking lot big enough to handle the crowd on that one day.
Right.
The rest of the month, it's not gonna be that busy.
Right. Or unless there's a storm and ice and people need bread and milk.
Can you count? Can you see the parking?
If we made twelve thousand the breakpoint, at three hundred and fifty, they would need thirty-four spaces.
Well, they might have, because they got some around the side and out there at the road.
Yeah.
I don't think, they have about eighty, eighty parking spaces. What happened to your picture?
I don't know.
They took it down. I didn't want you to look at it.
Context lost.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see, there, there's less than a hundred spaces there. Let's see, that's one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, sixteen, seventeen in that first row. And then there's about four more in the next one, so that'd be twenty-one, that'd be thirty-eight. And then another twenty-two, thirty-eight, fifty, sixty. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That's seventy-two, and then there's four up front, that's seventy-six. About five over there, that's eighty-one, and then.
They have a few in the back.
And then, uh, not any, oh, eighty-one, then there's those on the side.
Yeah.
It's about eighty-six.
Out there on the street.
Yeah.
Is that, is that Brookshores out there though? On that side of that street? That's not Brookshores, that's on school property.
Right, that's on the school across the street. They've got about eighty-six parking spaces at their store.
So they're right at, uh, three hun, three fifty, a little less.
A little, a little less. All right, so I'm playing with some numbers. If we did the zero to four nine 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 at the four hundred, five thousand to eleven nine 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 at three seventy-five, so five thousand square feet would need thirteen spaces, eleven thousand nine ninety-nine would need thirty-two spaces. Then at twelve thousand to the thirty thousand, we did that at the three fifty.
I bet you Dee ain't gonna buy this.
Twelve thousand would need thirty-four. And then thirty thousand would need eighty-six, which is right in line with what we think Brookshores is. Then, then.
Brookshores is three twenty-five. Do what they currently have.
Okay.
So just a bet play, I did it real quick.
Okay.
I think three fifty, eighty is like, I bet.
Well, I think that's, I actually think that that's my, my, my sweet spot in our story, is this is what Brookshores has.
They have money at parking.
They don't have a parking problem. Let's take this building that is, you know, a third of that discount drug, here's what they have. Where they're at currently, they do have a parking problem.
Brookshores probably has your biggest traffic of any store.
Well, they, they do. I, I mean, I'll find a couple of other examples. I, I needed to, I wanted to avoid all the gas stations because they have different all-togethers. Their parking is one, I, it says it's one per, um, state, or one per. Pump? Pump. One per pump.
Well, it's like the ones they've done recently that they've complied with our ordinance, Tractor Supply, Higgins-Bothams, they have lots of parking that never gets used.
The CAD is really weird. It doesn't actually show their square footages. Because I tried, because those were the two that I went for first to come up with some stuff. In all of this, I also learned that my neighbor isn't paying any taxes. My favorite neighbor. Um, I also looked at the Citizen Center as another, kind of an example of parking, because they do, so I thought I'd kinda play with some different examples to kind of, again, give, numbers, numbers are kind of hard and elusive to actually understand what they mean unless you can put them into some visualization. So I thought the best way to help visualize it is other than drawing charts and graphs and having everything laid out, is to use things that we already have in town that are familiar.
Exciting a house.
That's my story. So I think if we do the twelve thousand to thirty thousand is the one per three fifty, that gets them to thirty-four space, thirty-five spaces at twelve thousand. And at thirty thousand, that takes them to eighty-six spaces. And then anything over thirty thousand, we bring it back down to the one per two hundred because we don't really want them here.
Should be a high traffic store.
Right, exactly. And that much parking requirement would help them either to buy up a lot of land to be able to put it in, or it's gonna keep them out because they can't get the land that they would need. How does that sound to everybody?
George is gonna ask, how'd you come up with them figures?
Well, you can say used, uh, Brookshores is to create one of them.
Yeah.
We drove around town.
Because that was what he said last time, was y'all have such a wide, you, you went from, what he called from two hundred to three fifty, real wide. How did you make that big of a jump? But he wasn't looking at what we're looking at.
Exactly. Exactly.
But I don't know that they're looking at that.
Yeah, that'd be one of the justification, if you go over very downtown area, those are places where people stay a while.
Right.
It's a hours. Hours, yeah, they could be in there for an hour.
I can't.
Oh, gosh, tell me the story.
The unfortunate thing is they left early while you were just sharing your thoughts, and it looked like it was just gonna be your plan. And missed, they missed out on the dialogue and, you know, everybody.
Yeah, we'll figure.
You need to make sure that it's, is known to everybody.
Uh, everybody played it good. Okay, so with that said, do you still want, um, the table is?
No, we can, we can go ahead.
Are you sure?
If everyone else is.
I mean, has anybody, anything else in here stand out as something that was, professional offices, I kept at the one per three hundred, which we already had. I didn't make any changes there. Um, hotels, motels, and inns, they're one per guest room, which is what it's always been. Um, there was one other one. Um, restaurant kiosks, um, was one per one hundred. So a kiosk is gonna be pretty dang small, so basically they're asking for one spot.
Yeah, that's a.
Um, a cafe is one per three seats. Um, going on the principle that, um, it's America's families are two point five.
Right.
Um, so one car carries three people. Um, the other, um, washatereas is one per two machines. Um, and it said washing machines. I, I don't know if there's, I guess it's because most people, I mean, when you're gonna use a washing machine, you're, may or may not use a dryer, but you're always gonna use the washing machine. So I kinda left it at that. Um, I left assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and rest homes at the same thing as what a hotel is, one per one, one per room. Uh, cemetery or mausoleum, um, I left it at one per employee plus one for other use. So if they have three people, groundskeepers or surgery or administrative staff there, every employee would have a space, plus they'd just get one more, just in case. So if there's somebody who wanted to come visit a grave site, but most people don't park. They park on the road into the cemetery next to the grave.
Drive as close as they can and then.
Right, so I didn't really feel like that was a big thing, um.
Your assisted living might be a little higher, because there's a lot of people on assisted living that no longer drive.
Um, I thought of that, but that also takes into account the nursing help, the techs, and all of that, yeah. So I, because I did think that. It was like, oh, no, but then it was, okay, well, one per room.
Right.
How many staff do they have?
Be a visitor.
A visitor cafeteria, so I, I, I kinda left it at that. Um, but I had thought what you'd said, so halfway house, one per three beds, a hospital, one per bed. Um, jail, one per six cells. I found that really funny. I don't know why. I just found that one funny.
People come and visit.
Um, a bowling alley, and this one was interesting. We actually, our ordinance said six per lane. And I did drop it to four. I thought six per lane seemed excessive.
Yeah, that is.
Because most people play bowling and it's in groups of four on a lane, so.
Families would go, or friends, and there'd be two bowlers in one car.
Yeah, so I, I dropped that down to four per lane. Does that feel right? Do we need to drop it more because people would share a car over? I just, or six spaces per lane felt huge to me. Um, I put mini golf course the same as the golf courses, it's two per green. I don't know, how do you guys feel about that?
You know, with some of this, you know, we're basically putting the minimum, how many you gotta at least have.
That's all this is.
And a lot of these people, if they're putting in a business, they anticipate they're gonna do good, like.
They may go more.
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, I just, I'm just trying to pa, highlight the things that I, that I really kind of took, touched, questioned. Um, oh, Parker Playground, we didn't have any. Um, and I didn't really, uh, there wasn't really a good other thing to look at. Um, and I looked at a bunch of other cities and they don't have them either. So I don't know if we need one, but I did one per two thousand site area. So every two thousand square feet of a Parker Playground, they get one parking space. So I was thinking about the soccer fields and the baseball fields, you've gotta have parking. I don't, I don't know. Your thoughts?
Twenty, twenty-two spots per acre.
Yeah.
Governments don't like for people to tell them what to do. They don't mind telling them.
Tell you how much money you save them.
So anyways, I threw that out there, it, by all means, anybody wants to change that, I, there's no question, I, I'm happy to take whatever recommendation anybody has. Um, obviously recreational vehicle for permanent living, I said it's one per dwelling unit, which is the same thing that we have there already. Um, short term, um, so, uh, short-term rental. Um, I did, um, basically the same thing that was in, for single-family, double-family, so two per each two-bedroom unit, two point five for a three-bedroom unit, three for each four-bedroom unit and higher. I found that somewhere, I don't think it was ours, I actually found that in another city. And it made sense to me. So for a single-family home, a three-family dwelling, what do you guys think?
Two spaces per two, per each.
Two spaces for a two-bedroom unit.
Okay.
So two point five for a three-bedroom unit, so three spaces. And then three for each four-bedroom unit or higher.
That I think that's fair.
Um, there was somewhere, oh, bed and breakfast accommodation in a residential home, I did one per guest room plus two additional spaces, because you need the homeowners to have a spot. You need the homeowners to have a spot. Um, that was kind of my truck stop, one per gas pump. Um, anything else in here, guys, that? I, I tried to do as much of what we just already had that made sense and only touch the things that just stood out to me. Um, and then, like I said, I corrected, like, all the industrial stuff where it's one per two employees or one GFA, whichever's greater is what is actually documented in our nineteen ninety-four ordinance, so I kept that. So, all right, um, okay, with, are we taking a quick break?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna hold for you.
Okay.
Yes.
Just went up to ninety-four.
Ooh.
Breaking news.
What's that?
Just went up to ninety-four people coming to the father-daughter.
Oh.
That's awesome.
Now, I have the recommendations for council on the three rezones, but I think I have to change the hearing dates on here, so I will email you those tomorrow.
Okay.
We need to document what all happened with this week. The minutes, I mean, how we.
Yes.
Had it postponed and we reposted and.
Yes.
Yeah, this is bad, unbelievable.
I lost all my customers for this.
Yeah, because nobody could do anything.
Nobody can, everybody canceled.
You're still good, I need your attention, I need your fun, your body.
I thought I was just dropping food for you guys and then going and taking care of all the wives.
That's right, that's right.
We have an appetizer menu for them too.
Oh, I wanna have it, see what it is.
What'd you say, Pam? You was losing customers? What'd you say?
All of my customers canceled for this weekend. All the guests that were scheduled to arrive, they've all canceled.
Well, the weather's gonna be fine this week.
Yeah, I know.
So you think it was weather-related then?
That's what they told me.
Okay. They're not watching the weather then, are they?
Nope. But they were outside of my cancellation policy, so I had to let them. Somebody's not getting paid next week. Uh, we're giving them, um, half-price appetizers on our queso. And, uh, and then we will also have a, and that's gonna be a, um, herb, chicken wing. More dainty than a buffalo. And then some type of a crostini, and then our normal, the rest of our normal appetizers. Okay, so, just so that we get this motion right. Um, anywhere that on our sheet where we were doing the zero to five, fif, five thousand five hundred, blah, 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 we're going to change and do. No, on the, on the sheet that we presented in the book.
Oh, okay.
Or in the packet. Anywhere that was zero to the, zero to five thousand five hundred, we're gonna switch those to zero to four ninety, four nine 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 at one per four hundred.
So we can't, well, engineered slab.
Correct. We're gonna do five thousand to eleven thousand nine ninety-nine at one per three seventy-five. And that number is because it's sprinkler systems. Then at twelve thousand to thirty thousand, because we just could, we'll do one per three twenty-five.
Well, you were using Brookshires as a, kind of your measure.
Yeah, it was.
Current.
Okay, so I said one per 325, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then anything 30,000 above goes to one to 200.
I like it.
Okay. All other items in here except the one where I said I needed to add the personal services, one per station plus one per employee. Does anybody else have any other note changes?
Okay, on the 1,000 to 499, it's, uh, 400.
One per 400.
400. And then the, the next one.
Is the 5,000 to 11,999. And that is one per 375.
Okay, and then the 12 to 30?
And the 12 to 30 is the one, is it 325 or 350? What did we decide?
325.
It ought to be 29,999, just to be.
You're right, 29,999.
That or do 30, 001 for that next one.
Right, and then 30.
And that was 325.
325. And then 30,000 plus is one per 200.
Yeah.
And that's 200?
Correct. Excuse me.
So we got, we got 200, 325, 375 and 400.
Correct.
And what was the other one you was talking about, Pam?
Um, under personal services, uh, the spa beauty shop. I had that as one per, uh, station, and it should be one per station plus one per employee to match the other barber shop stuff. Massage shops. Okay. Everybody good? Okay, do I have a motion? To recommend or not?
A motion we recommend, the adoption of the new parking standard as discussed.
I'm seconding.
All in favor? 4-0. Having no further business before the commission, this meeting is adjourned at 7:24.
I gotta get home, today's my anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
Oh, thank you for coming.